We want to welcome you to our City Commission Regular Meeting. We ask that you please turn off your silent cell phones. Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 7:00 PM and at midnight. And you can also view our City Commission meeting on YouTube. At this time, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance followed by solid meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll have a proclamation. Whereas the Leavenworth Farmers Market offers consumers farm-fresh, affordable, convenient, and healthy products such as fruits, vegetables, cheeses, herbs, flowers, baked goods, meats. And Farmers Market serves as integral links among urban, suburban, and rural communities, affording farmers and consumers the opportunity to interact. Leavenworth Farmers Market offers electronic benefits, transfer technologies for use by Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program recipients, and redeeming their benefits. It also offers opportunities for senior citizens participating in the Senior Farmers Market Nutrition Program to redeem their checks, and provides unsold produce to community free food programs. Now therefore, I, Jermaine Wilson, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas, do hereby recognize Farmers Market and the contribution Farmers make to daily life in America, giving notice to our citizens that the week of August 4th through August 10th, 2019, is Leavenworth
First, you know, thank you, Mayor and City Commissioners. Thank you so much for the support we've had from you over the years. You know, a good Farmers Market needs three things. It needs a good venue, and we have one that's an envy of the state. I can tell you, the Haymarket Pavilion, the restroom, the parking area, anytime I go out of town to a Farmers Market meeting or not, and I show them a picture of this, they're envious. And so we thank you for that. Next thing you need are good vendors. And we have good vendors. And our vendors work together. If a vendor doesn't have the product you're looking for, he'll point out a vendor that may have it. And so we try to work together, and if you go to our market, you'll see that we don't just put all the produce in one place and all the soaps in another place and the bread. We mix them up because we want to be an integrated market in terms of the products that we offer. And they're all locally grown. Everything, all the vendors are within 50-mile radius of Leavenworth. And the only way they can sell it is if they make it or they raise it. They're not allowed to bring in anything except peaches. We've allowed that because we really don't have anyone that has peaches. And then the last thing is good customers. And this year, we're seeing lots of new faces, and I think that is really good. We're getting a lot of support from not only the community but from the fort, all of which are good signs. And we're now starting to see some of the SNAP program. You mentioned it in the proclamation, the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. And that's why I've got CJ Sampson here with me tonight. He runs our welcome stand, and he runs the machine that the people can come in and do their SNAP card, and then we give them a dollar token for each dollar, and we match it up to $50 on Wednesday and on Saturday morning. So a person using their SNAP card can get additional $50 a week if they use it in the Farmers Market. Now, there is a catch to the $25 match. It can only be fresh produce. But if they use their regular tokens, they can get the breads and the meats, and they use the match to get the fresh produce. And that's a rule set out by the USDA in allowing us to match. So I think with that, thank you, Mayor, for making the proclamation, and we look forward to seeing all of you in the market. And come see CJ, and let him know you're there. Sign up for the market bag. He runs the sign-up sign. And Saturday, he'll go around with the wagon, and the vendors will all put something in it. But again, thank you for your support. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Crome.
Next item on the agenda. Old business, consideration of previous meeting minutes. If there's no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to accept the minutes of the July 9, 2019, regular meeting, and the July 16, 2019, special meeting.
Motion has been seconded. Can you hear me, Commissioner Griswold?
Yes, I can.
All right. Voting begins with you.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, 4-0. Second item on the agenda, second consideration ordinance, second consideration ordinance number 8107, Development Regulations.
Our City Clerk Carla Williamson will handle this item.
Mayor and Commissioners, this ordinance was first presented at the July 19 meeting, and it was placed on first consideration by consensus. Again, this is just a change to the one section in the development regs, adding in the provision that election signs can be placed 45 days prior to the election. Prior to that, there wasn't a date prior to the election that they could go up. There was just how many days after that they had to come down.
Okay. Any comments?
No.
If not, this requires a roll call.
Aye.
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 Vote passes, 4-0. Next item on the agenda, this is open to the public citizen participation. If there's anyone that would like to address the commission and speak about anything that's not on the agenda, now's the time. Well, if not, moving along. Next item on the agenda, consider cereal malt beverage license for Town Pub, 1001 Ottawa Street.
City Clerk Carla Williamson again.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is to consider approval of a 2019 on-premise cereal malt beverage license requested by R&amp;D Anderson LLC. This is the Town Pub located at 1001 Ottawa Street. It is requested due to a change in ownership. The police department has approved the request. The fire department, who serves as the city health inspector, has done a preliminary inspection of the building, and there are no issues. The building is slated for an inspection by the state, and again, the fire department for the health permit, and that's not slated till August 1st. So we went ahead and thought we'd go ahead and bring it to the commission, and we don't see that there'll be any issues with the inspection. It's been a restaurant for many, many years, so we don't see that there's going to be anything and didn't want to hold it up after the 1st so that we could issue that as soon as everything was ready. So it would be contingent upon them passing that inspection on August 1st. The owners, or the new owners of the business are here this evening. If you have any questions for them or questions I can answer from you.
Do you want to say anything?
Yeah, come up to the podium.
The Kirbys have been there a long time. We're happy to see somebody else keeping it open, opening up.
They've been there for a while, like 30 years now.
State your first and last name.
Russell Anderson.
Okay.
I don't think I have any questions. Just glad to see you. Just thought you might want to...
So do you live in the area?
Yeah, we live over on Monizuma.
Okay. So I'm going to live in Leavenworth.
Pretty much all my life.
It's just good for the people to know that you're keeping the restaurant open and...
I've worked there for almost 18 years. Just made sense to buy...
Absolutely. That's awesome.
That's awesome.
Great.
So you're going to keep the name, correct?
Yeah, everything's going to be the same. I don't know how many people's eating there, but the only thing that's going to change is Bill and Sharon's not going to be there now.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what's up.
Other than that, the same, same place.
We're glad to hear this. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Do you have anything, Commissioner Griswold?
No, I don't.
All right. At this time, I entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the cereal malt beverage license for Town Pub at 1001 Ottawa Street.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Griswold.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, 4-0. Next item on the agenda, consider bids for 2019 Thornton Street Improvement Project.
Public Works Director Mike McDonald will handle this item.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, staff is extremely pleased to bring you this evening the recommendation for approval of the bids received for Thornton Street Improvements Project. I'd say Thornton Street has always been on the list of streets that we ought to do something about, and we started pursuing options back in 2015 with the KDOT study on traffic safety. Ultimately, we did a concept study, and the City Commission approved the contract. I believe it was in 2016, we did the, we did a concept study, which we then rolled into a design contract for Thornton, essentially from Fifth Street down the hill to Second Avenue, up the hill to Fifth Avenue, and on over to 10th Avenue. It'll be a complete replacement of the street with new curbing, new gutters, all-new storm sewer system, new sidewalks, repairs to the sanitary sewer system, and a new traffic signal at Second Avenue to replace the one there that has some functional issues, and of course, an all-new roadway. It's been very exciting to work with the designers. We did have a public information meeting once the plans were essentially completed, advertised for all the owners and residents in the corridor. It was a very good meeting, several useful changes from visiting with the property owners. Those were incorporated into the plans, and we have been acquiring easements since that time. We are pleased to recommend that the project be awarded to Kissick Construction. While we have not worked with Kissick in the past, they are a local powerhouse of a company. We included a lot of their background information in your packet. This type of project is not new to them or their company. They're the low bids, and they submitted a schedule which basically says that they plan to be kind of digging up stuff about September the 9th. We will also be having a meeting with the school district to go over our current projects. We had a meeting before we had contractors identify with the school board representatives. We have a meeting now with them and our contractors, and I believe there's some public information meetings on this particular project with the public to exchange contact information between the residents, the contractor, and ourselves. The inspection for this will be with the combination of contract inspection services and city staff. It is a big project. It will last through about this time next year. There's a possibility that some loose ends may carry over even into 2021, but the draft schedule we received shows it being completed in September of 2020.
Are they here?
Yes, sir. I did not mention that, but their representative from Kissick is here this evening.
You mind coming up? Just in case if anybody got any questions.
I don't have any questions.
So are you going to have to block off the Thornton Street?
I'm sorry?
Are you going to have to block off the entire?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm David. I'm sorry, I'm David Kissick with Kissick Construction, Vice President. Like you said, we've never worked with you guys before, but we're very excited to. Just to give you a little background about our company, we do about $110 million in revenue a year, 400 employees, about 500 pieces of equipment. This is, we plan on self-performing about 85% of the work on this project, so we don't think schedule's going to be an issue. And we do this type of work every day, all the time, so we're excited to work for you. We understand that, you know, we're going to be guests in your city, and we want to be good house guests, clean up after ourselves, and make sure everything's put back the way it's supposed to be. So we're excited to work for you. I brought business cards. I can hand them out or leave them here if anybody has questions.
I'll put them with Carla there.
That's a businessman.
So, yeah, if you have any questions, please feel free to give me a call.
Do you have any questions, Commissioner Griswold?
Just on the inspections, I assume that the inspections will be conducted throughout the entirety of the project. Is that a, is that a good assumption?
Yes, sir. We will be bringing an inspection contract hopefully the next regular meeting to identify the inspection costs, but it will be inspection throughout the project by ourselves and the contract team. We will inspect all phases of this. It's not as intensive as a KDOT project, but we do have inspectors on the job every day. They're performing work.
Okay.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions or comments, I entertain a motion.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve the contract with Kissick Construction for Thornton Street Project in an amount not to exceed $4,891,062.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, 4-0. Next item on the agenda, consider bids for 2019 Sidewalk Improvement Project.
Public Works Director Mike McDonald again.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, this is another important part of our infrastructure we bring to you this evening. It's a recommendation to approve the low bid by Sands Construction, Leavenworth, for the 2019 Sidewalk Improvements. This is part of our ongoing effort to address sidewalk needs in the community. Based on discussions with the sidewalk committee and discussions of their recommendations with the City Commission, we've had the plans prepared by an outside engineer and put it out for bid. The primary locations are listed in the policy report. Eisenhower Road from Hughes Road east to the Co-op property. 10th Street from Spruce Street to Olive is some repair and replacement. 10th Street from Olive to Cherokee is some repairs. And Congress Street from Second Avenue to Fifth Avenue on the south side is some new sidewalks, some repairs, and some replacement. So we're trying to address the needs of the communities as well as the public that uses the sidewalks to get around in their neighborhood. We expect this to get us a start in the middle, probably possibly late August, and be completed within 60 days. We've worked with Sands, we have not worked with Sands and other construction projects, but they are a Leavenworth-based company, and we have seen many of their projects they've done with other contractors in the community, and recommend that this be approved. They are in the audience this evening. I'm sure would have some comments if you have questions.
Any comments? Come on up.
I don't have any questions.
We're just going to have them give us a quick history.
Yes, I am Mary Ann Tackett. I'm the project manager with Sands Construction. We're very excited to get this project.
Great.
We're growing. We're a hometown company. We'll be performing 98% of this project.
Oh, wow.
It's just, it's just neat to be a part of a growing company, a hometown, doing work here in town.
I see your trucks around town all the time.
Yep, and we moved into our new office building a few months ago, and it's on Eisenhower Street, so part of this project's right down the road, which is fun.
Great.
So we're just excited to do it.
How long have you been in Leavenworth?
11 years.
Oh, wow, that's good. Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Griswold?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have two things real quickly. Will there be an inspection program as part of this particular contract? Is that something that will be the responsibility of the city, or will it be a joint city and other contractor, you know, as far as the inspection process?
This project will be inspected by city forces.
Okay, I guess, you did say that someplace in there. That language sounds familiar. Okay, thank you. I guess I didn't read it closely enough. The other thing, Mr. McDonald, is there anybody there from the sidewalk committee?
No.
Do not believe so, sir. Thank you for asking, though.
The only question I had, and I bring this up with all seriousness, I think I brought it up when we dealt with this the last time the list was brought to us. I, and in terms of the Eisenhower Road, Hughes Road to the Co-op property, I, the other priorities I'm very comfortable with, but do we really think when we build this sidewalk that there'll be people walking on it? I know that we have a sidewalk across Eisenhower to the, to the, to the south, correct?
That's correct. We do, we do believe that this will be used as part of a sidewalk that's fairly continuous all the way currently out to branches. There'll be a new sidewalk on the Eisenhower Road project constructed by the county here in the next year or two. People like to not cross the busy street, and there are a lot of people that walk in the big loops on the sidewalks from Leavenworth, and that would be on the north side of Eisenhower.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that approval of the low bid submitted by Sands Construction for the 2019 Sidewalk Improvements Project, base bid in the amount not to exceed $289,938.95.
Second. Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Griswold.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, 4-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, change order number one to Contract 2018-43, New Lawrence Road Improvements.
Mike McDonald again.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, this is a change order related to the New Lawrence Road construction project that we did last year. This is kind of late coming to the game. The short version is we had it prepared to bring to the commission last fall. However, it got stalled out and filed and was never brought forward, so we apologize greatly for that. The project is related to our inability to acquire an easement from one of the adjoining property owners to this project related to storm drainage system. So we were able to redesign the system to accommodate the stormwater without using that easement, however, that came at a cost of about $35,000. The additional, additionally, there was some curb replacement on existing curbing on New Lawrence Road, right where it comes off of 20th Street. It was misidentified as 24-inch wide curbing, and it was actually 36-inch wide curbing, and that is the $1,400 portion of the change order. This is, work is long been completed, and we do recommend that the City Commission approve this, payment for Lexico.
Okay, so this is already, everything's already done. We just owe them the money, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And basically, it should have come to us before we owed them money, but it didn't, so...
Yeah, it should have come to the commission about the time it was occurring. I would say that the city staff was aware that this was out there. We discussed it between us that we would put together a change order, which we did, and then we, it didn't. It ended up in the file and didn't get passed for the necessary approvals. And essentially, the contractors asked, "Well, are you going to send us our money?" And we said, "We thought we did, but we didn't."
So essentially, is your staff going to pay for this, Mike?
That's what y'all are here for. They're fairly embarrassed by this, so there is some payment being exacted from our staff.
Some form or another. All right.
Any other comments?
I just have one comment or question for Mr. McDonald. The change order number one, I understand about thinking that we were going to be able to get this easement, and we weren't able to get it. But what we're going in there now to do, and one step is requiring the removal of two existing storm boxes and associated pipes. That's not, that, those aren't storm boxes and associated pipes we put in there as part of this project.
I believe part of it was, sir.
Did you hear?
No, what, I didn't hear. I'm sorry.
Part of this is removing and resetting work that was done as part of this project initially.
Okay, and that, yes, that's what I thought. I wasn't exactly clear on that, but that, to a certain extent, that's what we're talking about with respect to change order number one, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there anything we've learned in terms of an insight, maybe, or a lesson learned? Could this, could we, can we avoid this similar situation occurring in the future? I guess that's my question.
Well, the indications were from previous discussions with the property owner, we would not have had this problem. It turns out that was incorrect discussion. So if there is a lesson is you should never, you should never build a project till you have all of the easements. That's the way KDOT does their projects, and sometimes they drag on for years trying to get these to the court system. We have tried to strike a medium arrangement. If we aren't able to acquire easements in a friendly, non-intrusive way, we bring them to the commission to say we need help getting them. In this case, we didn't think we'd have that problem, but it turns out we did. Ultimately, the amount of money that was being discussed by the property owner was in excess of the amount of money we bring you this evening.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that explanation. That helps me.
So basically, we need to get it in writing before we do the work?
Well, it helps, but...
I would say it would, I would think, wouldn't you?
Yeah.
Mr. Waters?
Yes.
Okay. All right. We're not going to beat this to death. Let's just go on with it.
I think this is the first one of these I've seen in the 20-some years that I've been here, so. I'll let you skate on this one, Mike.
If you do, I appreciate that, sir.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that approval of change order number one with Lexico for the construction of the New Lawrence Road Improvements Project in an amount not to exceed $36,518.37.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Griswold.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, 4-0. Next item on the agenda, consent agenda, Commissioner Griswold, I mean Commissioner Bowder.
After review of the claims from July 6, 2019, through July 19, I move approval in the amount of $833,064.97, net amount for payroll number 15, effective July 19, 2019, in the amount of $377,674.28. This includes police and fire pension in the amount $11,572.36.
Second. Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Griswold.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, 4-0. Are there any other discussions amongst the commissioners?
You mean before we close?
Before we close.
I just wanted to say what an honor it was to represent the city at the International Luncheon Day.
Oh, yeah, that's good, yeah.
120-some students that were there all got a little certificate from the city and lunch and visits with the, with the county and with the city departments during the day, and they all seemed very appreciative of that, and we're appreciative to have them here. So that's all I want to say today.
Commissioner David, I have nothing.
Mr. Taylor?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Griswold?
No, would, would Mr. Tetter just, I know that we're, I think later this week, we're getting ready to put up some replacement posters on the billboards on 10th Avenue Park and out there at the intersection, near the intersection of Muncie and Route 92, 4th Street, just to advertise and so the people can actually see Camp Leavenworth, the festival for the first city of Kansas. And if Mr. Tetter wants to say anything more about that, I happen to know about that because that's all a little discussion on Facebook about it, but I think it's important because we're about to... I think it's important because we're about two months out from the festival at this point.
Yes, Commissioner Griswold, we actually picked up the new banners today, the banners for our Camp Leavenworth, city-sponsored festival for the first city, which is September 20/21, third weekend in September. The new banners have bolder colors, they'll be a lot more readable for folks driving down the street and walking on the sidewalks. So, Parks Personnel will be putting those up tomorrow at Ray Miller Park, right there at Muncie and 4th Street, and then replacing the other two banners at 10th Avenue Park. So, those should be up, and they're much bolder, so...
That's good.
Sounds good, thank you.
Yep, so, only thing that I have, I want to invite everybody out to the Churches United for our youth, for families that are in need of school supplies, Sunfire Baptist Church, I want to say at 11 o'clock, they're going to be passing out free school supplies in backpacks. Other than that, I have nothing else. Motion to adjourn the meeting?
So, move.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.